This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So I will go ahead and call us to order. And I'll go close in, Doris Scott.
Present.
Eric Iax.
Present.
And Chair Megan Harvey, I am here. We will now, the first item on our agenda is public comments. So, public comments, we welcome anyone who's in the room or who is joining us. To raise their hand and then we will call on you and you can unmute. And we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and tell us your name. And are we need street name, is that a requirement?
No.
No, just name is required and. Yeah, we look forward to hearing from the public. Alright, so we are opening the public speak at four forty and I see a hand up. And so, do I have to open the queue here? Here, you can unmute, you can go ahead.
Great. I'm Kira Henninger, I'm a parent of two fifth graders at Mountain View School. I'm also a school psychologist in a neighboring district, so I speak wearing two different hats. First, thank you for having a virtual option to attend this meeting. It provides an additional access point to families, which I think is super important, so I appreciate that. I assume that this year is very similar to other years where there is a poor budget outlook. And there will be proposed cuts to the school budget. I'm here to say we can't afford to make any more cuts than we've already made. Our schools have an incredibly high level of social, emotional, behavioral support needs, which are currently not adequately being met. Our program offerings at the middle school are also very sparse and do not include STEAM or world language classes, which are offered in many, if not all, the surrounding districts at the middle school level. I know you are all here because you care deeply about our public schools. I know the budget process puts you in an impossible position, but please continue to advocate for what our students need. As an educator, I can tell you that when you cut programs and positions, you put an additional burden on the educators that are left, which in turn puts a burden on our students and greatly impacts their needs. Additionally, as you negotiate a new contract with our teachers and staff, please keep the need to retain our high-quality teaching staff at the forefront of your mind. I'm super grateful to the wonderful teachers that have supported my children since kindergarten and while we could never pay them enough for all the ways in which they love, support, care for and teach our children, please show them that they are respected and cared for by our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no public commenters in the room. So I will give it, usually give it a minute, but given that there's one other person on the line, I'll give it like fifteen seconds to see if our other public person would like to comment. And then I will call the public speak. You are welcome to unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a traveling remote attender. Cause I'm juggling having my kids and I do also want to echo what Kira said, which is I really appreciate the virtual option. And I also just want to echo what she's saying, which is, I think, you know, it should be obvious, but if it's not, our student, the cuts we made to our budget in the last few years are all of the issues that we raised in the budgeting process two years ago. Sort of the chickens are coming home to roost. The cuts to paraeducators, the increased class sizes, all of the things that we raised as a community as issues with the budget cuts the last time have, pretty much everything has come to fruition, all of the things that we were most concerned about. And so I really encourage this committee and the school committee and the rest of the community to rise to the occasion and not continue to cut our educational budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, seeing no other anyone for the public speak, we will close the public speak at four forty-four PM. And we will move to the next item on our agenda. And this is of the current finish show, we'll turn it over to our leaving Director of Business.
Oh, thank you, I don't know how amazing I am, but I take the compliment and get it. Alright, so for, for the first item where it says review of budget format, I guess what I'll do is just kind of talk a little bit about the process going forward. Us as a subcommittee will have a series of meetings where we, today get like a general overview of where we are in the process, I guess, and what things are looking like right now. We'll take a little bit closer of a look at the Mountain View and high school budget pages. The next meeting, right after February vacation, we'll look at the special ed and the district-wide cost centers, which, there'll be a little more in those, as you can imagine. There's a ton of proposed changes at Mountain View or the high school. But, you know, we can get to that later. While these meetings occur, the subcommittee will give feedback things that can possibly be edited and, you know, I'll make those edits as we go. Which would then get us to our March, I think, fifth meeting, where we'll kind of do an overview of where we are at that time, based on these first two meetings. At that point, the subcommittee may feel happy to vote the budget, move it on to the full committee or we have a placeholder for the week after, if you feel we need it. We needed it last year. This year, obviously we have no idea. If we don't need it, then that gives me more time to get the budget book together, which is good. But if we do need it, then I'll just have to kick it into high gear like we did last year. Cause there's parts of that book I can't produce until you vote that budget to move forward. Cause the problem is there's, you know, these cost center pages that you'll see momentarily, but there'll be a couple of changes between now and, you know, when you actually send a budget to the full committee, probably. So rather than replicating my work, you know, eight different times, I just kind of wait until we're good. And then the cost center sheets will go in the budget book. And if you recall from the budget book last year, there's a lot of charts and graphs in the beginning and all of those are tied.
Come over this way and then you can see it better, maybe.
I just mute you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, we're just muting. Actually, I can't mute you Claire, but do you mind, perfect, okay. Sorry Nick, go ahead.
Oh yeah, no, no problem. So all those charts and graphs are linked directly to the spreadsheets that these come from. So it'll update as these update. But there's quite a bit to finish and print out and not much time. Cause I have to have that book done and available to the public seven days before the hearing, which means there's got to be a PDF on the website, there's got to be a physical book available for folks to come and look at. The ad needs to go in the Gazette for advertising the hearing. So all that's got to be done seven days prior, so, you know, it gets to be crunch time. I, last year, we moved to having electronic versions of the budget book for school committee members. Then in effort to save paper and resources and everything like that, if you're amenable to that, again, it'd be.
There were no issues with it the last time we had it, yeah, that sounds great.
Nobody seemed to be upset about it, I made six copies, I think, in total of the book. Two of them live in my office, one is kind of like my master one, if you will. One's extra, the superintendent has one, city clerk has one, the mayor has one. I think Sue Colby has the last one.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, the PDF will be a mirror of the actual budget book. I have two copies of each page, so I can make the PDF look pretty without three holes.
Exactly, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So that'll be sent to the whole committee, obviously, once the book is produced. You know, from there, the hearing will take place on the twenty-sixth. The school committee hopefully will vote the budget at that time. And then it gets moved on to the mayor, essentially, as she builds her budget book. There's some stuff I need to do after the school committee votes the budget, because the city's budget book looks entirely different than mine. All of our hundreds of accounts fit into six on the city side. It doesn't take me that long to do that, it's, you know, pretty quick work, but my deadline is pretty much right after the hearing as well, because mayor's got to have her budget book done, so she can present to the city council, which usually happens in mid-April, at least it did last year.
The distinction for the public is that when we're doing our bookkeeping, we are going by DESI categories?
Yep.
Which is different than what the city would be required to do on a day-to-day basis.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at it, not only the DESI functions, but also locations and expense types, a lot of it's tied to the reporting that I have to do for the state. I mean, it's also just, you know, good practice to know how much you're spending in each cost center. Whereas the city's budget book looks at it from the UMass accounting system, which is kind of the universal Massachusetts accounting system that's adopted in cities and towns. So, anyway, that's, I guess, a little brief overview of our format. Anybody have any questions before I move on to enrollment?
I have to make a clarification, so the book, the PDF and the avenue tip are due seven days before which meeting?
Our primary.
The school committee, probably.
So it would be the nineteenth, I would have to have that done by.
Perfect.
And as you know, if we don't, we have our tentative meeting on the twelfth, before the full school committee meeting.
Right, right, right.
That would give me, you know, not a lot of time, but I'll get it.
Some all-inners.
I'll get it done, I got it done last year, I can get it done this.
We don't have to say.
And we may not even need that meeting, I'm supposed to do that, maybe done.
Unmute all that, we need that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And you're using, or the city is using new software this year, is that correct?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, I was gonna ask if that was going, if it was like even easier, but.
We are currently working on the chart of accounts that would, you know, basically tie the city and the school accounts together, because right now they're not. So work needs to be replicated.
Okay, so you haven't gotten those like efficiencies yet, that hopefully will come when you have the software you need.
Yeah, well, it's now we're just trying to create a chart of accounts for the consultants that like fits into the software that the city selected.
Yeah, that's, it seems like that's going.
It's been a process, I mean, we have something that I think can work in the city auditor, things can work, it's just a matter of getting the software company to get it to fit into what they offer. But what that will do is every time a transaction is done, it's not going to be done twice. Cause right now, essentially, it has to be done twice, because the two sides don't talk to each other. Which is annoying, but, you know, it's the world we live in. So, we're hoping.
Maybe not just for one year, maybe in a year, it won't be the world's.
We're hoping.
In the summer, okay, that's pretty good. So just for the background for public who's recording for later or who's watching right now, this is, the discussion we're having is an extension of the budget process from two years ago, in which there was an agreement between school committee and city council and the mayor to kind of get a broad look at all of the sort of budget processes and how the city budget talks to the school budget and all of that. We're as opposed to.
Forget it.
Yeah, so.
Forget it, it's gonna be good once it's up and running.
So the stuff that we talked about two years ago, the budget process, did not just fade away and stuff. It has been underway this entire time, they have consultants there. Okay, cool.
So I'll move on to projected enrollment, I have copies of what we are looking at. Right now, yeah. So this will be a page in the budget book, once it's produced. You can see that our enrollment this year, in the middle column, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four column, is less than last year's. And that is the October one, twenty-twenty-three enrollment, the one that gets submitted to the state for the SIMS recording. So, you know, we're just under fourteen hundred now and, you know, on the bottom of the chart, you can see over time from, you know, the year schools reopened after COVID, you know, we're down a little over seventy-five students. That's common everywhere, you know, that the state has seen across the Commonwealth, a decrease in enrollment. Looking at, into next year, in the right-hand column there, we have projections. Those enrollment projections are based on what the enrollment looked like when this page was produced a couple of weeks ago. So it is different than the October one SIMS report, some students have moved in, some students have left. You know, it was a more accurate picture and, you know, from early January. Obviously, everybody's moved up a grade level as well. Kindergarten and pre-K were, you know, to an extent, that's going to be unknown, I mean, you know, we have.
We had registration just a little while ago?
Oh, we get our K enrollment really from our projection, I should say, really from census data, as well as preschoolers that are already there. You know, what happened this year was that there was fewer kindergarteners that were enrolled than we thought were going to. Cause my enrollment projection going into this year for kindergarten was like close to a hundred. And as of October one, we only had eighty-three. So now we have eighty-five that, you know, are there now. So that's, you know, what grade ones' projection would look like for next year. A lot of pre-K students have enrolled since the year has begun, that's been, you know, something that's.
A question about pre-K, what is our capacity for the pre-K program?
There's three teachers.
And then summer full day and summer half day, it's changed sometimes.
Full day, I think, Maureen, can you speak to that, I don't know what the model is exactly.
One is full day and the other, the other is half day. It's all dependent upon for the IP fees for some of the students.
Right.
Some require a full day.
Sure.
Program and some half day.
What's the classroom capacity, I guess, was my question, but I can ask, if we don't have it offhand.
It's not the regular size classroom.
No.
It's small, now I can find that out for you.
I can, I'll dig up, thank you. I was just curious.
I want to say they're not more than like fifteen.
That's what I want to say.
I could be pulling that.
And that, and we have a peer one-to-one, so that's seven or eight kids with an IP and each have a peer model.
Yeah, okay. Age-appropriate student. Usually that is eight with seven special needs.
Okay.
Yep. So we do expect a slight increase in enrollment for next year, based on a, you know, just maturation through the grades, you know, larger grade, eight moving up into grade nine for next year than was there this year.
We don't see a bump from K to one, cause I know K is not mandatory, so we're not, we wouldn't know yet necessarily. Okay, so we should obviously see if that happens.
Don't see a bump.
No, we didn't, but I'm wondering, post-COVID, kindergarten having been optional, if we'll see any bump at all, just curious, we'll watch for it.
Okay, that'd be nice.
Yeah, that'd be nice, yeah.
So we're expecting about fourteen-eleven, of course, that number will change between now and, you know, September, but that's what we're basing our predictions on, so that's what we're looking at for enrollment.
I have another question about enroll notes, and this might be stuff that you would still want to answer too, but just pondering. So if you look, if we look back at like this year, we have eighty-three kindergarteners.
Yep.
How's that compared to the census? What was expected, is it fewer than what you expected? Was it a lot, or do you think, do we know if it's school choice or? Opted out or homeschool?
Yeah, there's a lot of folks that homeschool, they're students now.
Yeah, okay.
Post-pandemic.
Especially the younger ones.
Cause the census data that we got for this year, well, I should say for next year's projection, didn't even include some of the kids that are currently enrolled in our pre-K. So like, there's some disconnect there, I can't necessarily figure out what it is. However, based on, you know, families that have reached out, you know, about kindergarten information night and, you know, the people we got from the census data, that eighty-five number, we're feeling confident.
Okay, so we don't think it's like eighty-five from the census that we're going to go down from, okay, great.
I have one more question, sorry. The capacity at the high school, do we know that number?
I don't know the number, I mean, it's, we're definitely have fewer, far fewer students than.
I'm just wondering if we can, as we're doing this process, vet out what, if any, opportunities we have to open school choice in slots for the high school for next year? And if so, if they should be concentrated on any particular grade levels, but I'll dig into that.
They generally open quite a few ninth, ninth grade slots, just because, you know, we do receive the Smith.
Maybe we'd make a better effort to advertise those slots then.
And I'm not sure, I mean, the, Julian Levin, our curriculum director, you know, is a school choice person. You know, I don't know, but if you were to reach out to her, she could give you.
Thank you, Nick.
Absolutely.
I know this isn't necessarily related to this, but we're sitting here and it came to mind.
Yeah, we discussed it actually, last Friday, we met with the college board rep for this area. And we talked about, for example, looking at offering some more AP opportunities there with the thought that that would be a bigger tractor for other students to come to the high school, because we do have spots.
Sure, yeah.
So we discussed that last Friday.
That'd be awesome.
Yes.
When people do homeschool, they have to fill out paperwork.
Oh yeah.
So do we have a list of like the numbers specifically with per grade?
So we have to keep a list, because we have to prove that they do homeschool, they have to give us a plan.
Right.
And then they have to give us assessments, and then we have to review them and make sure that children are showing progress.
We're the ones who assess that?
And they'll be, they give us their assessments?
Yeah.
And then I look through them all, or the tenant looks through them all and decides that children are showing progress based on the assessments they give back to us, because if they're not showing progress, then we don't approve them to have a homeschool plan.
Okay.
Is there a way to see that number at some point, like?
Oh, we have, we have it all on a spreadsheet.
I wonder eventually though, probably some people will start trickling back in.
And it may be worth a call to check in with those families.
Do we lose the money for?
No.
Okay, so it's not like school choice where we send the money off, right?
No, there's not, I mean, we just lose the enrollment.
Right, and we move on to the school.
Or just to hear from them, how it's going, why they made that choice, what, conversation, yeah.
Yeah, so we usually have that when they're first initiating the plan. A lot of this is religious reasons, they want to go to religious homeschool. And a lot of them have traditionally here done homeschool. So they're in their third or fourth generation of homeschooling. And then there are some that they feel that their children have such special needs that they don't want them to go to a school, they want to take care of them at their house. So those are the three big reasons why.
Yeah, I'll pull you a picture.
So what I think I'll do now is, I'm not going to go through this whole package right in this moment, I'm really just going to focus on the third grade for now. And the reason why is because, you know, before we get into any kind of like, you know, deeper budget discussion, I like to, I like to kind of just, you know, let you know the different variables, the different volatility there, the kind of atmosphere and climate, and, you know, just every year is different. So, some variables here. All of it ties into the numbers that you will see forthcoming. And FY twenty-five, fifty-three point three-six percent of our EEA teachers will be in the top three steps of their respective lanes. Which means that, you know, we retain educators well. And of course, I've probably hired some folks over the years that are, you know, at the top of the pay scale, but, you know, that does speak to retention.
And overall quality, like these are experienced teachers with the highest.
Who like working here, who value working here and care about East Hampton as a, as a community. You know, and that's a snapshot in time, I mean, you know, somebody could resign over the summer and I would say that could be reflected here, but that's what we're looking at now. It's unknown if all eligible teachers will move up a step due to deadlines for course completion not being until August, so.
How many are eligible?
There's quite a few if they, you know, if they, you gotta do some coursework in order to advance in the bachelor's and master's lanes. Not every step, but there's, I think, three of the steps in each, you know, each lane, without looking at the contract, you've got to get either three or six credits. So there's some folks that, you know, if they have taken the coursework, could move up. But they also have to get these things approved by the superintendent prior, so we can, you know, get budgeting done as accurately as possible. There are some folks that we know will move up, that have already provided the, you know, the proof of credits and whatnot. But there's quite a few that have, you know, been here enough years to move up a step, but haven't applied for, you know, approval of any credits yet. So, you know, that, I mean, when you build a budget, you have to essentially build in the assumption that everybody is going to move up, because if, what if that happened, then you gotta be able to pay for it. But, and I'll likely hit it won't. We just don't know, because the deadline's literally not to like August fifteenth, like I'll get letters in the summer. You know, other contracts I've seen in other districts, there's usually a deadline somewhere, you know, it's often February first. And some districts do like a, twice a year, like you might be able to move up halfway through the year. You know, if you do the credits during the year or whatever, but our current contract doesn't have that, so.
What would we refer to that as, a deadline for application to move up a step?
Or, or change a lane, you know, some folks are moving from bachelor's to master's, or master's to master's thirty. If you're in the master's thirty lane, you don't need any credits to advance, you just, it's just years. You know, so you could have some individuals move up a step and move over a lane, depending on where they are. The next step is unknown personnel cost increases, as we're currently negotiating in the bargaining unit. So, you know, while I've calculated what, you know, step raises would be for all eligible folks based on our current salary scale, we don't know what, you know, that current salary scale is going to look like when the negotiating is all said and done. So, you know, that's a factor as well. Our chapter seventy funding is flat. Where the governor's House Two budget proposal would be eight million, seven hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars, which is only an increase of forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars from this current year. So we are back to a minimum eight districts. The last two years, we were not. Our chapter seventy increase from last year going into this year was three hundred and fifteen thousand-ish.
What happened to change that?
There's a few different factors, the, I mean, the enrollment decreasing didn't help, but it didn't, the decrease wasn't large enough to have that much of an impact. The largest factor honestly is inflation. Which I know everybody's sick of that word, we've heard it billions of times, you know, last three years. But, I mean, without getting like too, you know, detailed with the chapter seventy formula, basically, when the Student Opportunity Act was passed, there was going to be incremental increases in various categories to provide districts with more funding for, you know, higher need populations such as English learners, special ed students, low-income students. And they kind of, they divided into like eleven or so different categories. Ones like, you know, fixed costs and insurance, ones administrative cost, ones instructional cost and so forth. And they basically apply like a percentage of how much all of those are going to increase each year. But there's also an inflation factor that goes into it as well.
So it's not so much that we lost eligibility, it's just that the state money is tightening up a little bit?
Well, they get the inflation factor from the Bureau of Economic Statistics website somewhere. It's called like a state and local price deflator. And basically, inflation for the chapter seventy formula is capped at four point five percent each year. Even though going into this year, it was higher than that, it was like, the actual inflation rate was like five point something at the time. But it's capped at four point five. This year, or going into next year, it's one point three five, so that's, that's what hurt us.
How are other districts hurting everybody?
Just, and what are the limits or directives on how we're spending chapter seventy money? Or are there no limits, it can just go into the general fund?
Well, the city receives the chapter seventy funding to help offset the, you know, the cost of education. You know, every district has what's called a foundation budget, which essentially is like your minimum net school spending, which we always exceed. But the chapter seventy formula is supposed to help offset that, or funding, I shouldn't say, is supposed to help offset that. Um, but the chapter seventy formula is supposed to help offset that or funding, I shouldn't say, is supposed to help offset that. Um, so every city and town has what's called the required local contribution. So, you know, they they look at the valuation of property in the city. They look at a municipal revenue growth factor, all this kind of stuff that comes from like. Auditors and, you know, it's kind of not my expertise, but it appears in the spreadsheet. Um, and then they calculate your enrollment. They look at your low income percentage. You know, there's a lot of things that get thrown into it. But the increase in chapter seventy-eight over the course of the years of the, uh, Student Opportunity Act. Which we're going into year four now, I think. Um, you you know, you have to write a Student Opportunity Act plan, basically of how. You you would use the increased funding, you know, um, you have to pick a, you know, a group or two and kind of. Targets and goals based on, you know, high quality instructional materials or evidence-based practices that are going to. You know, target the needs of of those groups, basically. Um, we will have to write a new plan for next year.
It's due April first.
Yeah.
This April first.
Yeah.
Yeah, was that to work on it?
Okay.
And school committee has to approve it.
So that'll be on an agenda at some point, uh, forthcoming. So, uh, we are not alone in this. Two hundred and ten other districts are also minimum eight increased districts going into next year. Um, which last year was only a hundred twenty-five or something. So a lot of districts, it's just the inflation went down. That's, that's the bottom line.
Is there anything, like, is this something that this, not that it's really bottomed out? Is it changeable? Is it something that the school committee getting? Appeal? I don't know. No, nothing.
No, because I mean, it's in mass general law when the Student Opportunity Act was passed and the way they calculate it and everything like that. It's just.
It's a factor in the budget this year.
I hate to say it, but it is what it is.
It is what it is. Okay.
And, you know, there's really, I mean, I mean, the only thing you could do is is try to get local legislators to advocate rewriting the act or, you know. Something like that.
We work with that. Like, if there's a plan of action, you have community members or even school committee, I'm sure, thinking of.
We do, to focus for like the conference.
Yeah, yeah, and just contacting local reps and saying this is really, really hard.
Yeah, I I mean, if there's any silver lining, I mean, the the three hundred and fifteen-ish thousand dollar increase we got this year. Stays with us next year.
Right.
You know, we don't lose anything. We're just not, we're not gaining. We're we're getting the the thirty dollars per pupil minimum is what we're getting now. The last two years, uh, either the House or the Senate, I don't recall which one. Um, doubled that amount in their budget, which ultimately became part of the budget. So that that thirty dollars per pupil may double to sixty if they choose to do that again. Hopefully, I mean, it's not gonna, you know, it's gonna get us up to ninety-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, but better than nothing. Um, however, it's not in the governor's house one budget proposal. It it's, it's Senator House. When they go to their conference committees, would need to propose that. All right, uh, inflation nationally or I guess regionally is currently three point four percent. Is it going down? Is it stagnant? I mean, it overall seems to be going down from what it was a couple of years ago. Um, however, that does factor into increased costs of things. Um, our students at C-Tech will see a five percent tuition increase. Uh, up to sixteen thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars per student, uh, over, you know, this year's a five, exactly a five percent increase. Um, I, so I already have that number, which is good. I don't have the Smith vote number yet because that doesn't come out till April or May, uh, set by the state. Um, so I just kind of have to project that.
I thought their number was set by their board at Smith.
No, no, it's set by the state. That that literally will come from Rob O'Donnell from Bessie.
Okay.
Um, and it won't come until April, late April, probably. Um, the good news though, I mean, I mean, this year was, it was, uh, lower than I projected. Um, so I made my projection for next year a little closer to that. Um, out of district tuition, uh, oh, the, uh, OSD that sets the rates for those places. The increase for next year will be four point six nine percent, which is much better than the fourteen percent we saw this year. Um, yeah, historically high. If you look back, somebody, uh, the, uh, business manager listserv keeps a spreadsheet. Going back to like FY eleven, um, and if you, if you tease out, uh, let this year's, you know, outlier amount. The average increase is like one point seven or something like that from year to year. It's usually not that huge. Um, and then this year was the fourteen, which was, you know, huge. Uh, next year, four point six nine.
And that's like transportation to build, uh, placements or that?
It's for the placement. It's not the transportation cost. It it's literally the price of the private day schools that, um, some students go to. Um, another, uh, factor here is our SR three funding will be gone. We've been hearing about that quite a bit, but it's, you know, certain, uh, certainly important to repeat many, many times as we go through this budget process.
How much money was that in really?
Well, the entire grant was like one point, almost one point six million.
Over three years?
Over three.
One point six threes?
No, one, about one point, it's a little under one point six. I don't recall the exact figure, but, um. We we really didn't start spending it heavily until last year. Even though our grant was written two years ago, we didn't really start dipping into it until last year.
Is that associated with COVID?
Yeah, that was the third round of like the ARPA funds that were allocated to schools. Um, and it was the largest amount by far. Um, so that will be gone as of the end of this, this year.
Stop being facetious.
Um, our special ed transportation cost will go up seven percent. That's in our contract, the Zanpool. Um.
Uh, how long is our contract with Zanpool run?
Yep, two more years.
So that's separate from the Durham?
Yeah, correct. Uh, we got two more years on that. Um, this year's increase was about five. Um, it was as low as they could get it, and then the out years are a little bit more. Um, but that's.
So two more school years for them upcoming? So we have the rest of this half of the year plus two more years. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, that's the business right now. It's everywhere. There's, you know. Nothing we can do about that. Um, continued universal free breakfast and lunch, uh, will, you know, it's in the governor's budget, so it. Should be expected to continue. Uh, so, you know, our cafeteria account at least is healthy for now. Um, you know, that's doing fine. We're able to dump some money into the program for, um, you know, replacing equipment, repairing equipment. You recall voting on a raise for the hourly food service workers back in December, so. Um, those are the kinds of things that we can do, which is good, because we weren't able to do that before the meals were universally free. There was quite a debt issue here in town with food service prior. Um, electricity costs continue to rise. That's another huge factor.
What do we know about with the two new buildings and the projections that they had for generation? Do we, is it time to have some sort of a check-in on that? Are they creating as much electricity as they anticipated? Or are we using more than they anticipated? Is it time to do some sort of, um, an assessment in that situation?
I mean, the solar arrays on top of the buildings generate what they generate. I mean, they're, you know, when I talked to the architect last year. He said you could expect about an eight percent, you know, decrease in what you use, which I mean, it's huge, but.
Eight percent from white truck usage?
From the filthy array that's on top of that.
Like whatever you spend, we will, we're producing eight percent of that.
It goes back into the building, but like.
We're not producing a huge chunk of it.
Yeah. No, and I mean, the building is huge. Yeah, I mean, it's more energy efficient than the older schools were for sure, but. All the bells and whistles that come in a brand new building, you use more and the air conditioning too. And that's. That's a lot.
Yep. And air filtration and all that stuff up there.
Oh, yeah.
All great.
It was built with, you know, uh, uh, air purification mindset for sure due to the timing. Um, but, you know, even the cameras, all the lights outside, I mean, you know, all that adds up. Uh, and then my last variable is health insurance costs will increase next year.
I don't know how much though.
They have, well, they haven't gone up in a few years from my understanding. Uh, obviously, I'm relatively new here and, um. You know, so I didn't see it the past few years, but I was told that, um, they haven't been increased, um, really since, uh, the onset of the pandemic. So, uh, but they will be going up next year. Um, which, you know, I mean, it puts a burden on employees, of course, because they're paying their share of it. But, you know, it also puts a burden on the city because the health insurance, the seventy-five percent portion that they pay. Um, is an indirect school cost. It counts towards that school spending, so in the eyes of the city, when the budget gets made, that's part of school spending.
Right.
You know, even though I, like, you won't see it in these budget pages that that's like their piece, but, you know, that that's. An increase for them in all the departments. Um, you know, it's certainly tightens things for them.
So do you, it's not in there, do you have to figure out like what the percent increases and pick, like, budget that in or that's city side?
City side.
Okay.
They do all, yeah, personnel department will do that. Um, all right, so then there's a few assumptions that are just, you know, other things that I, you know, like to touch upon. Um, this current year, uh, we have six point eight six total FTE in our SR grant. Uh, one, uh, instructional coach, two point four eight teachers, one nurse, one point three four IT staff. Uh, point six four of our family engagement coordinator's salary, point four of an adjustment counselor's salary. So all of that is currently funded with money that will not be there next year.
The teachers, the two point four eight teachers, it might be mind charting behind you. The two point four eight teachers, do we know what the position? That's not a classroom teacher, right?
Uh, one is a point four eight special ed teacher at Mountain View, one's a, uh, one point O special ed teacher at the high school. And the other is a one point O EL teacher at Mountain View. Um, there's an SEL grant we currently have that funds the other point six of the adjustment counselor at the high school. Um, I do not believe that grant will be available next year either. However, we were also told it wasn't going to be available this year and we were able to get it. Um, which is good. Um, that helped us obviously pay a portion of, uh, of their salary, but.
And that adjustment counselor is at which school?
High school. Uh, it it was added with SR. The position was added with SR funding. Um, but, you know, we we can't rely on that funding for next year. Um, so to move all the staff to the general fund, it would cost, uh, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars based on this year's salary. That does not include any, uh, you know, COLA adjustments for, you know, based on whatever negotiations end up. So, um, that's what it would cost to move that staff to the general fund just based on this year's salary. Um, we currently have twenty-two students in out of district placements. Which is a lot. It's like, you know, it it's, I I think, uh, uh, almost two percent of our population, uh, district wide. Um, unfortunately, part of the chapter seventy formula, um, you know, they, they think we all have one percent of our population. Like they, it's just flat. They don't look at that specific data. Like they do low income students, like they will actually get your low income data to get a number of students, but for out of district placements, it's one percent of your enrollment. So if you have no kids out of district, you're kind of benefiting from that. You'll get the one percent you've got, you know. Yeah. Uh, and lastly, my prediction for students that will go to vocational schools is eighty-seven.
That includes some sort of the current need creators?
Uh, I've been talking to Heidi Byd, the counselor, um, being quite different. Uh, otherwise, I just move the students off a grade level that are in their current places. Um, grade nine, of course, that was a moving target to an extent, but it's the best data I got right now. Um, all right, so from there, I think I'd like to move on to the cost center sheet. Um, you know, I don't want to get too much, I'm getting too much an overload.
This is incredibly helpful. Yes, thank you. And these we can.
You can keep all this.
Put up, uh, with the minutes, right? You can put this, post up with the minutes, so that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, certainly a public document. I can do that. Um, but before we dive into this, when things do disappear, like the SR funding. Typically, in a given year, are there other avenues that schools are able to find? Places to not replenish all, some of the, of this money, or is it just when that, when certain stuff disappears? It's gone and then you just go based on your level.
SR's novel, first.
Right, yeah, SR, no, yeah, no, I understand that, but I'm sure there's just times where things disappear every year. Are there ways to, often we try to just absorb it in a general fund, but not often other things that can, you know, okay. That you can do that way. And sometimes grant rules too. Oftentimes you can't supplant. You can only add stuff. Uh, with SR three, you could supplant. Um, which, you know, was nice at the time, but it's going to come back and pinch us here when you see the budget number. Um, and, you know, the stuff that we have to add back in in order to maintain level service, which. Um, you know, what we're really attempting to present to you here is a level service budget.
And so to be clear, do you want to explain level service, Megan, for the public?
Yeah, so when we were thinking about, and Nick, you'll probably to help me out, because I'll just give the very basic layperson. You know this, but as we're thinking about like, what are we budgeting for? There's level funding and there's level services. Level funding means that we are going to spend the same amount next year that we spent this year. And that is a cut in services.
Yeah.
Because of the increase of costs.
Because everything costs more, all the things that we've already gone over, the variables and all of that.
Yeah.
So when we, our, our bare minimum that you have, the years that I've worked with you and been on school committee in general. Um, we go level services. We, we do our very best to keep that, and that's talking about keeping all our positions. And it, you know, does not address that, some of that growth stuff that we hear from the community, that we ourselves are interested in, that's not adding any positions. This is the increase in the cost to our, our budget just to do next year what we've done this year.
Which in.
Good summary.
Anything else is a way, way, way more.
Which in this particular year, um, is, is a lot. I mean, just based on the amount of, of grant funded, not only positions, but also expenses. Um, you know, that we're attempting to keep.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I think a, a large part of the budget message that you will hear time and time again as we go through the process. Is that, you know, when, when all of this money came down the pipeline. It was with the, I guess, thought that, you know. After, you know, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which is, and that SR money needs to be gone by, that's the federal fiscal year ends. You gotta spend it by that. We will have recovered from pandemic-related learning loss and pandemic-related, you know. Social emotional trauma and, and pandemic-related, you name it.
Yeah.
Um, that was the thought, you know, three years ago and when this, you know, money was, was being allocated to districts. Here we are, closer to the end of that time period, and we see that the switch didn't just flip. While surely some students are in a better place than they were three years ago. Um, and not all of them surely are, and, you know, the needs are still there and they're still.
Can I make a comment to that too? Nick said it was really important, especially to the public listening. I will also say, if you have a classroom of twenty students, which ours are larger typically. A classroom of twenty students and two or three of those students are really struggling, it impacts every student in that classroom of twenty students.
Sure does.
And I don't think SR was meant to also adjust like educator recovery, but like everyone's recovering.
Great point.
You know.
Yep. And and it's just, we're just not there yet. I mean, I mean, the learning loss itself is, you know, the gaps are probably starting to, to decrease. I mean, they're not where we were prior, but, but the other things, the trauma, the SEL stuff, that's, that's still there.
But we're falling off a half million dollar cliff. Like this isn't being phased out gradually. You're going from.
We phased out quite a bit of it this budget this year.
Nick phased a lot of it out last year. This is, this could have been way worse, but.
Yeah, and I mean, it's still.
I'm saying they didn't phase down the money. They didn't say, oh, okay, well, let's do a couple of years and step it down a little, step it down a little, step it down a little. It's, it was, here's a pile of money and then it's gone.
Plan last year.
Yeah. Yeah. He said that one.
And still, the difference is a half million dollars.
Yeah.
And I, and I mean, these positions, I think when some of them were created, it was prior to me being here. But it was, I think, with the vision that some of them may be able to be sunset at the end of the funding. However, you know, we've had quite a few discussions with our leadership team and our central office staff. And, you know, we, we don't really feel that we're in a place to be sunsetting anything.
Comments from parents tonight.
But, you know.
That's where you start to hear.
So anyway, we, we, as I said, we're presenting a level service budget here, but it's not going to look like that because of an increase. You're gonna see eventually, um, you know, and and just because we have a level service budget too, doesn't mean that. Everything mirrors what it was the year before. I mean, sometimes needs change. Sometimes you get a bubble class and a teacher needs to be reallocated to a different grade level. Sometimes, you know, there's a force at the high school where there's this very little interest. And maybe a position will be moved to something else because there's a need there, you know, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily mirror the previous year. But what it does is it provides, you know, services to students without cutting anything that, you know. Um, that we feel that they need to, um, be. um, that we feel that they need to, um, be in the best place they can be. Um, so looking at this sheet, I'm obviously not gonna read every row because, you know, that's not gonna. Um, but it, it basically, it, it organizes the Mountain View school budget by, uh, DESI function. So, you know, at the top would be more administrative stuff. Then you get into teachers, subs, paraeducators, um, after that is, is like expenses, uh, such as professional development, textbooks, general supplies, things like that. Um, toward the bottom is guidance and psychological services. Uh, then at the very bottom, you got co-curricular activities and custodial salary. Um, there are some special ed expenses at Mountain View that fall under our special ed cost center. So this isn't a complete picture of every service that would happen at Mountain View. Um, we just break it up that way because our, our special ed department manages that, so it kind of falls under their umbrella. Um, the special ed aspects you'll see here are salaries.
Yeah.
You'll see teacher salaries, you'll see speech pathologist salaries, you'll see, um, you know, related service provider salaries. Um, but any kind of contracted services and special ed supplies and, you know, testing materials and things like that would fall under the special ed budget, which you'll see in two weeks. Um, things I like to, you know, I just tell you what the columns are. The first one is what we actually spent last year. It's gonna look nothing like what the budget was, but that's, that, those were the actuals. Um, the second column is this year's approved budget for that cost center. Um, third column is what we've expended in, uh, Mountain View so far this year. There's probably some that are above budget already. Um, that happens, you know, it's your budget's never gonna look the same in the end as it did when you, uh, started it. Um, I kept the FY twenty four other funding column, um, just to highlight the, you know, decrease in the other funding that's gonna be available between this year and next year. Um, so you could see in that column, all of the money that was spent from other funding sources besides the general fund on, um, you know, various expenses, arguing including staff. Uh, the next column is this year's, or sorry, next year's proposed budget. For the general fund, uh, the column next to it is other funding, so you will see that it has decreased dramatically. Um, about a half a million dollars from Mountain View. Um, school committee appropriation change is if you take this year's proposed budget and subtract, uh, this current year's budget from it, you'll see what went up and what went down, and then the percentage changes at the end. So what I like to do now is just kind of speak to a couple ones that either went up a lot or down a lot, because those are the ones that kind of speak out to people. Um, middle school department heads, I guess, is the first one. You'll see that it's like, you know, six or seven rows down. It's like a minus forty three point seven nine percent. Um, there's just not as many as what's been budgeted in the years. So I, I just literally took what's in the contract, multiplied it by the amount of department heads they actually have, and then just came up with a more precise figure, but it's not cutting anything there. It's just too much money to budget it for, for the last two years. Um, the next one, you'll see a fifty percent increase in copier click charges. That's because Mountain View did not budget enough for it this year. Um, and that's just the charge you get for every copy that's made. Um, before this year, that was all paid out of the district wide account, but it really shouldn't be. It should be allocated to the buildings. So I created those new, uh, new accounts for this year. Um, the copier lease fee remains the same. That's a contract for three years. The price is the same every month for the whole three years, so. Um, that's, you know, part of their building budget, but their actual copier use, they've got to budget that. And if they end up going over, they'll have to do a budget transfer from somewhere else in their building budget to cover it. Um, so, um, the principal or the head of school at Mountain View is, you know, thinks that, that, you know, increasing it by four thousand dollars for next year will cover it. Um, based on what she saw going, and, you know, in her defense, it's certainly hard. She's never had to budget for that before, so she just kind of, you know, put an amount down and, you know, saw partway through the year that, oh, boy, using the building. Um, however, we did recently put a program in at all the copiers in the district called Paper Cut, which, um, you basically have to release your print jobs with your I V badge. Um, which, uh, this does two things, well, three actually. There's money on paper, because sometimes people print unwanted jobs and I can just delete them before they release them, so it saves copier click charges, paper, uh, and it's also a security feature, I mean, somebody prints an I E P or something, you know, that's not visible by obviously everybody, so. Um, that way it does a lot, so it's, um, you know, we'll hope that will keep copier costs down. Um, it was just implemented, uh, uh, three or four weeks ago. So, um, you should see some savings there. Um, the next, what I would consider large one, it's a hundred and twelve point five percent increase in substitutes. And the reason for that is because sub money was moved to Esser this year in order to keep costs lower. You know, the rationale being, you know, people still get COVID and have to be out for X amount of days. Um, so a lot of districts moved some sub costs to that. However, that's gotta come back. Like, there's no way we can't have that fee at what it was for, you know, previous years. Um, you'll see a hundred percent de- decrease in the library paraeducator salary. That position was eliminated going into the FY twenty four budget. Um, it just wasn't done so until further on in the process, so you still see like the number there for the FY twenty four budget. Um, where that went is it became part of the elementary librarian salary. She was previously funded by Esser and she was one of the ones we moved into the general fund this year. Um, and, you know, in doing that, the, uh, you know, we felt the library paraeducator position, but, you know, because we do have two libraries in Mountain View, so. Um, that became part of her salary as well, it did, but it won't be in next year's budget.
To be clear, the public with two libraries in that building.
Two libraries, two librarians. And so we did not have a para in that library. We thought, oh, maybe we'll have a para in that library, and so doing that, we approached the library services a different way. It wasn't the cut position last year. Thank you.
Um, alright, next, uh, you'll see a hundred percent increase in, uh, it's more subs paraeducator subs this time. Again, that was Esser and now it's not. Um, same thing with teaching para subs, special ed, you know, it's just sub money going back. Uh, the next large increase you'll see is the, uh, oh, Mountain View librarian salary, so where you see the, um, the paraeducator salary get decreased, when that money went to the librarian salary, that explains the ninety two point three six percent increase there. Uh, and there's nothing really big until the, toward the bottom, the co-curricular activities. There were a few clubs running, uh, that haven't in previous years, so we're throwing a little bit more into that, so the co-curricular clubs can run for now. Um, so overall for the building, you see a five, four point four or five percent increase. Um, which is not huge. Um, I keep talking about the large budget increase. You'll see it's the bulk of it's gonna be in special ed and the district wide budget sheets. Um, but you will also notice a five hundred thousand dollar decrease in other funding.
Right.
Um, school choice being one of them, I'd like to decrease how much school choice money we use to pay for, um, Mountain View teachers. That's where we apply our personnel, school choice offset, rather than spreading it out, we just do it in one account to keep it clean. Um, over time, I've been trying to decrease the amount we use for that, because if we keep spending more than make, you're eventually gonna run out of money.
Do, can you step off for me? What's the choice out number roughly? It's a choice in number, or what's the difference?
Um, off the top of my head, no. We, we choice out more kids than we get in. However, that gap has been closing over the last few years. Um, this year we're slated to get about six hundred and eighty something thousand dollars of school choice revenue in. Um, choice out, I believe, is over a million. However, the city pays that off their assessment. That doesn't appear anymore at my budget. However, the revenue would appear in my budget.
How much? One point?
I think it's a little over a million. I don't want to misquote.
Nope, that's totally fine. Just like roughly, you know, it's not eighty grand, for example.
No, it, it's quite a bit. Um, we do choice out more than we get in, but as I said, the gap is closing.
And that choice out number, are you including vocational in that?
No.
No.
It's just students who choose other districts, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, um, on to the high school. Which will look, you know, in a lot of ways similar to Mountain View in terms of increase and, um, the types of discounts you can see there. I'm gonna spare you the, uh, whole spiel about what all the columns are, because they indicate the exact same things as they did in Mountain View. Um, you'll notice about a two hundred thousand dollar decrease in other funding, and that's indicative of the S E L grant and the Esser money. Um, large changes, uh, for this year, um, I think the first big one you see is tutors, uh, or sorry, uh, I read underneath the tutor line, uh, a decrease in the building sub. Uh, they don't have a permanent building sub at the high school anymore, so that's why there's a decrease. Um, that was created as a part-time position last year. It was, uh, there was a point six seven health teacher hired. Um, and we ended up making it a one point O and the other point three three of their day was spent just permanent building subbing, but, um, she became a one point O health teacher this year. Um, and, um, you know, the M O U, um, you know, for the point three three building sub expired at the end of last year. So that money will just be reallocated to something else. Um, next, you'll see a large increase in subs. That's, again, some sub money was in Esser and next year it won't be. Um, next big change you'll see is the five oh four B S T other salaries, uh, that, I mean, the amount that's going up is not much, but it just, you know, the percentage is high. It's because, um, they, uh, now have two five oh four coordinators up. Obviously, the case load was large. So one was added this year through M O U with the, uh, E E A. Um, just because so many students want five oh fours for various reasons, that it was not manageable for one person to handle all that. Um, so that's why the increase is there. We assume that need will remain, um, going forward. Um, you'll see a testing and assessment stipend go down a hundred percent. Um, that's because that, um, stipend previously went to Sue Welson, the assistant, uh, principal at the high school. Um, that's going forward, going to be part of her salary. It won't be like a separate stipend or anything like that. Um, and that money is indicated in the top row, the principal vice principal salaries. There you'll see an increase that. Um, that's what that is. Um, and the rest of the high school is pretty, you know, pretty benign, little, just little increases for, you know, supply purchases and, you know, just inflation, it really, um, you'll see overall a five point one four percent increase in the high school operating proposed budget. Um, so does anyone have any questions about this two cost center sheets before I go through the rest of the overview here?
Um, I do have a couple, so for the, just so I, I am seeing the whole picture of it. For the high school, the increase in principal and vice principal salaries is five point three eight percent versus the two percent at Mountain View. That difference, is that difference entirely the, um, testing stipend?
That, it's partially the testing stipend. It's also, uh, partially, um, a negotiated increase in the assistant principal's contract. That was, like, there, there's already an increased number in her contract.
Okay.
Um, in addition to whatever cost of living adjustment.
Right.
Um, so.
Just cost of living over here.
And if you look at the cost of living adjustment in the, uh, in a Mountain View one, that does not include any cost of living adjustment for next year. Because those rates aren't set yet, like that gets negotiated with the superintendent when the time comes. That actually represents the cost of living adjustment between last year and this year. Because it doesn't get applied to the budget until after the superintendent ultimately sets the salary.
So does that mean that right now we have this two percent increase and there's five point three eight percent increase? But before all is said and done, not the budget season, but like actual expenditures, that's gonna be higher with this year's, okay?
Unless we all get a zero percent, right?
That's, yeah, that's, that sounds like a no, so.
But yes, it will.
Will increase.
And then next year, when you see this same sheet, you'll see a different number there that indicates whatever the cost of living.
Same sheet, different year.
I'm trying to make them few.
Yeah.
At least the budget, but, you know.
I have more questions. So we are in contract negotiations.
Yep.
These, this like whole first half on the M V S and the first, hmm, third, whatever it is.
Not the admins, but everything else.
And not the admins, everything else. We don't have anything. Does this include their, um, step in lane increases? This includes just?
Yep. Step in lane increases are in a district wide line item.
Okay.
Um, for, you know, that, that, and the same thing with admin raises, that all goes in there.
So does it, does all of those also not include next year's COLA? So those will all go up? Also, so regardless of what, in addition to the negotiation outcome? Does that question make sense? Outside of rain? Not really? Try again. Okay, so there's two things that are gonna happen. One is that negotiations will at some point finalize, and then we'll know what the increase is gonna be. So that's what has to be worked in. There's also next year's COLA still to get worked in, like in the case of the admin that we talked about?
Yeah, yeah, that'll have to be worked in after the, you know.
So these are.
Probably will happen when the negotiations are done.
Yeah.
I think we're still a little foggy.
Okay.
Is it not accurate to say that as far as E E A employees are concerned, COLA is presumed to be included in the contract negotiation? Am I correct?
Okay, okay, so I was.
So we don't know what that percent will be, but that's all.
Two different ones.
No.
Okay.
Admin, I believe, yeah. Am I right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, what, what.
You said that, I just.
That district wide line item, you'll see in two weeks when we need, it's much larger than this year's because there are teacher and paraeducator and clerical and custodial step raises in there. Um, because regardless if we're settled by the time the school year starts, folks will advance a step because the current contract is.
So that's separate, but COLA is.
Stay in place.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful.
Now, whatever money for COLA increases, you know, ends up in the, in the budget there, that would get added to that same line item. And then once everything's all said and done, once it does settles,
Yeah.
all of the money from that account gets transferred here, there and everywhere to cover step raises, lane changes and whatever, you know, cost of living adjustments would be.
So we will have it built in the best we can?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's always unknowns in negotiating. You can't go into the specific percentage, because then you're not.
Yeah, and so to clarify for the public, we've entered into negotiations. Everything that happens in that room is confidential. It's one of our requirements. This is negotiated in good faith. We can't make assumptions that we can reflect in these documents until we have an agreement with.
Yeah, I just want to understand what, where we'll see that. I got it. Thank you.
Which, you know, will likely be after this budget is passed.
Right, because we'll do this process and then we'll have that information.
Yep.
So another note for the public, like we're, there is likely, we're gonna have this budget, it's gonna be an increase from last year. And on top of that, there will be some other known likely increase that will be as a result of, of negotiations that have only just begun in the past.
It's a big, a while. Big, yeah, big impact to level service. You gotta think of what the, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, that was really helpful. I don't know if there's any other questions on these.
I have, we're not at, um, the special ed, but we're doing that in a couple weeks.
Two weeks.
So I have some questions there.
If we did it.
Totally agreed.
Yeah.
Um, and, and you will see the, the larger increases in those cost center, um, than the, the district line, so. Alright, I think I'll carry on through the overview from one of the page two. Um, I've put a couple charts that break things down in, in kind of the ways that, um, folks have liked them, can be written down in the past. Um, the first one is by expense type, so the, you know, the first row is personnel costs, you know, the first column is, uh, this year's budget. Uh, second column is next year's preliminary proposed budget. You'll see the increase as well as the percentage. It'll note on the right side. Um, contracted services, uh, that's, you know, that's really sped tuition.
Yeah.
And, uh, yeah, transfer, uh, no, transportation tomorrow, sorry. That's primarily special ed tuition. Um, supply is actually going down, go us, look at that. Um, other expenses, uh, increased. A lot of that's just other stuff that was put in the Esser grants. There's a ton of software that was purchased with Esser money, um, that, you know, the district really has an interest in keeping. That screeners, S E L screeners, universal screeners, like things that, you know, really inform educators' instruction now. Um, you know, it, it, we, we, we did take a deep dive myself, uh, the curriculum director and the I T director. Kind of looked at all the software we have in the district. Um, and, you know, there are some things that we don't need anymore that were used primarily for like remote learning and things, when, you know. And, you know, there are some things that we don't need anymore that were used primarily for like remote learning and things when, you know, when that was happening. But there are things that are very important to keep as well. As I said, it's a lot of screeners, you know, I mean, the social emotional learning ones, like $15,000 a year. But it provides valuable data and, you know, as we, we try to support our students while they recover from pandemic-related trauma, it's important to know where they're at. So, you know, our budget proposal, you know, really includes keeping a lot of that stuff that we found important as the years have unfolded. Intergovernmental is basically money we pay other government entities. It's largely folk tuition and also tuition we pay to mass public schools. For a handful of students that get tuition to other districts from here. And then non-net spending is transportation.
I have some questions about non-net. Our contractors van pool now, is that based off of the number of vehicles or the number of students using the vehicle?
It's number of vehicles, because they do, you know, put students on, you know, they, they pair them up as best as they can. I mean, I don't, I don't have more than one van going to one out of district place like they do, you know. But some require a monitor, that's an additional cost.
But we have van pool that's not surveying out of district kids, right?
We have 10 in district vans.
10 vans or 10 kids?
Vans.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot.
We got two and a, two and a half years left on my contract.
And, you know, there's pre-K transportation as well in there.
For specialized students.
For, yep. So there's quite a bit. Those numbers also include, you know, the Durham, you know, their piece and which includes vocational to, uh, sorry, vocational transportation. There's homeless transportation as well as foster care transportation. And I, I do use school choice money to offset the Durham regular ed and vocational ed transportation contract. So like the full cost of transportation is not reflected in that number. All right, then we break it down by the, the way the city ledger looks, personnel and expenses, other expenses. You'll see the personnel increase mirrors what's in the salary increase above. Other expenses, that's an important figure because 18.68% is where we're at right now. What was in the mayor's budget letter was 4%. You know, we're certainly doing our best to keep that as low as possible. However, you'll see another chart on the third page that shows what our fixed costs are. The stuff to stop out of our control.
Out of our control.
So by location, you'll see the four cost centers, Mountain View and High School, we went over those percent increases mirror what we're on the budget sheets. You see the district goes up quite a bit and the special ed goes up quite a bit. And, you know, it's really for the district, there's a lot of ESSER-funded staff that we'd like to keep and move into the general fund. And then the tuition and transportation for special ed are huge drivers for cost increases there. Moving on to grant and revolving account funded staff. So currently in the district, we have 13.776 FTE funded by grants or revolving funds excluding school choice. Because for school choice, we have just a blank amount to that account. We don't actually say that, you know, 10 tuition were funded with that. It's, it's an amount, it's an offset. However, this is half the number of grant-funded students we had a year, or staff we had a year ago when we were having this conversation. So we have tried our darndest to make this more of a, I, I don't know, black diamond ski slope instead of a cliff, if you will. You know, at least, you know, something more manageable. The FY24 cost of all of our grant and revolving funded staff is $822,603. And that includes staff that's funded from Title I. As well as, you know, revolving, tuition revolving fund. To keep all of our ESSER and SEL grant-funded staff, you'll see that 497,410 figure again. That's what we have to add to the general fund plus whatever cost of COLA increases as a result of negotiations happens. As I said, I would like to decrease the use of school choice from, we have 600,000 budgeted this current year. I'd like to decrease it because we're going to run out of school choice money if we continue to spend the way we do. However, that being said, I, I don't know that I can do that this year. I don't know. This is where we're starting and the end, we might have to apply more. I mean, I do have like a five-year projection I keep. You know, based on what I think our revenue will be, what I think our expenses will be. And at this point, we're gonna run out FY27.
Yeah, to clarify for the public who is looking at all of this, what Nick is referencing with the, the use of our school choice dollars. He's proposing and saying ideally, we would like to go from spending roughly 88% of that school choice revenue down to 80%.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually, it's actually going from 100 and something percent to the transportation.
Right, absolutely, right.
I, I mean, for the past few years, we've been spending more than, than Brian.
Right.
The year of mostly remote education, which would be 2021 school year, right? Going into that, not the year the pandemic actually hit, but the year after. Our school choice account got healthier because there was almost no spending out of it. Because of just the costs were completely different with transportation not really happening. So like the account built up a little bit, which was good. However, you know, we're, we're, we're just, we're spending more than we're making, you know. And, and, and this year, we're gonna need some at the end to offset whatever deficit we end up. And I know there's gonna be a deficit. I don't have a number obviously just yet, but, you know, school choice will fund and, you know, possibly circuit breaker, you know, whatever it'll be. Mix the different funding sources. But, you know, once that's all said and done in July, I'll know what we'll have going into next year. Then I'll get the revenue you can apply. However, all these expenses will come out of it over time, it dips a little bit. So, you know, based on these current projections and FY27, we can no longer spend more than money.
Yeah. I think it's super important to keep that and I'm so glad to hear that we have a projection of that. Because we have to keep money ready for out-of-school placements at any moment.
And we're legally required by law to honor and to pay for it and they can come at it if we have had a history of this happening.
Happens, yeah.
Yes. I have a question. I always had a working number in my head that we were talking about. Is $21 million the annual budget? Is this not, that is a number, isn't it? I thought it was.
I feel like that's probably your net school spending figure from like a year or two ago.
I'm not asking the right question. What is the total annual budget?
Proposed budget?
Yeah.
Uh, the $21 million figure you see in the second column. Uh, in the total, right, $21,61,734.82.
What does that not include that affects the school department or like all the grant stuff? You're asking what is it when you add all the?
Just the general fund.
The pots together.
Yeah, oh, oh, if you add all the pots together, you're looking at probably 23 million-ish.
Okay. You were thinking it was more 20, right? You're thinking it was 40 million?
Well, well, if you add the, the city's indirects in, you're gonna get a higher figure. Like, oh yeah, that's what you're, you're figuring in it. And they've been higher the last couple of years just because of the, the spending on a building project.
Right.
But, you know, the things the city pays for that are considered indirect costs for the school department. We have an indirect cost agreement where the city charges a portion of the, say, the auditor's salary, the treasurer's salary, the HR department's salary, the accounting software cost. You can charge some of that to a school department. Well, you're not gonna see it in my budget, accounts for net school spending because those folks are doing things that help us operate. Same thing with trash removal, the maintenance of this building, like that's not in my budget. Like the paper towels that I dry my hands for several times a day are, you know, that's.
Shaking.
That's an indirect cost. Health insurance is a big one.
Yeah.
Uh, but also retirement.
There it is, that's what I was missing, that's what I was missing.
Retirement contributions too. So all of that gets thrown, that'll be a page in my budget book. You'll see the city's FY24 budget for indirect costs. I won't have the 25 one at the publication of that, so you won't be able to.
That's fine, I was just wondering if I had a stroke, why 40 million was in my head and I was looking at.
That includes everything with the city does too.
Gotcha.
All right, so there's a few areas of minimal savings. You know, there's a few folks retiring this year and their replacements will probably not have salaries as high. I have to project my next year's requirements because we budget severance money for folks that have worked in the districts for X amount of years. They're entitled to a severance if they've been here that long.
When they retire?
Yep. Last couple of years, not as many people have retired. So, you know, I'm gonna decrease that account by a little bit for, for next year. I also have to pay separation costs out of there if like somebody leaves that has accrued vacation time. That comes out of there. That doesn't come out of their salary line because it's a, it's a separation cost. I have to report that differently. Some staff attrition, I, I think there can be some savings there. There've been a few folks that have, have left and, you know, their replacements haven't made as much, so that's a little bit there. I do have a settlement agreement expiring, so there's a $22,000 special ed tuition savings, which compared to how much we spend on that is like saying gas went down a bit. But it's something. Every little bit helps, right?
That's maybe one of those ESSER positions.
Uh, that's like a half.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not even. You look at the, the way it's shaped out, like we're talking about such small adjustments to the salary line versus like, you know, the special ed tuition, a half a million dollars.
Well, you must significant increases for the top of the next page.
Well, it's just, it's. Yeah.
As you were saying.
Save the budget last.
Yeah.
So our, our out of district tuition, that percentage, based on our current placements, which can change, represents a, a, over a half a million dollars in an increase. It's huge. Electricity, I'm thinking is gonna go up about 36,000. I did allocate some school choice money to offset that account. I didn't want to, but I, I had to get my number lower than what it was when I first started doing this. And it actually doesn't go against my five-year projection, like I kind of planned that amount. So it's okay. If we don't have much of a deficit at the end of this year I have to cover, I might be able to squeeze that to FY28 for school choice instead of 27. But anyway, folk tuition, with the amount of students that go and the cost increase, you're looking at about 189,000 of an increase. All that grant-funded staff from ESSER moving to the general fund and you keep seeing that number. You know, get that one in your head because they're gonna skate more. And then all the other ESSER expenses, like it wasn't just staff salary, it was the software, it was all the PD expenses we moved to grants this year, the subs, like everything. If you add all that back in, you're looking at another 207,806. And then the van pool contract with the amount of kids that we have, 91,644 dollar increase. But that also factors in, you know, it's a direct function and the out-of-district placement's increasing. I mean, you know, if you have one student at a school, you're adding a van. So, you know, you throw all that in a bucket and that's what explains the huge percentage increase in the proposed budget. So the last chart I want to show you is just fixed versus variable costs. Okay, the personnel line doesn't change from any of the charts you've already seen. But fixed costs and variable costs, like if you look at the right-hand column, the percentage of the total budget, personnel makes up, you know, obviously the most. I mean, for us, it's actually low because we spend so much on folk tuition. Like if we, when I was in North Hampton, that was like 81%, but all the North Hampton students went to Smith. So that wasn't part of my budget at all. They, they lived there, they went to Smith. But if you look at the rest of the budget, almost a quarter of it is fixed costs I can't control. The variable costs are like your building-based supply lines, like high school general supplies, Mountain View textbooks, like those to an extent can be variable. You can trim a little here, trim a little there, but it only makes up 5% of the budget. You're not gonna break your budget by not buying pencils. You know what I mean?
We could try, Nick, we could try.
It's not gonna happen, so.
We can significantly decrease quality life and make no impact.
But there'd be no curriculum. Like, you know, there's, you know, as, as a business manager, it is my job to, you know, present to you a fiscally responsible budget that meets the needs of kids. And the lens that I look at this from is different than probably a lot of folks because I was a career educator before I did this work. So I, you know, I have an understanding of what goes on in schools and, you know, kind of where they're at as they continue to recover from pandemic-related stressors. And I, in my opinion, don't, like, there's no fat here, really. I mean, we looked at everything, Maureen and our curriculum director, I sat down on Friday afternoon and had, you know, we, we have really looked at all avenues. And, you know, unless we have something happen, we don't expect like a student moving out of district or, you know, whatever. Like we, we got this thing, you know, where we can get it while providing level services. So just lastly, we don't plan on adding anything. We, we would like to keep what we have to help kids continue to recover from COVID. Under reductions, we are proposing not replacing a vacant Mountain View special ed position right now. The position's been vacant for like, I don't know, three months, right? The students have gone to other programming and, you know, if we don't replace that position, then that.
Is that a position that would be in a special ed cost center we haven't gotten to yet?
It would have been in the Mountain View cost center. And it's not included in the figure in there either. So if we do replace that, then.
Meaning your proposed budget already does these things you have listed?
Correct.
Okay.
If we replace that, then that number's gonna go up. We're proposing reallocating a Mountain View teacher to an intervention position. Little backstory on that. There, you know, if you look at just class sizes and sections going into next year, there's going to be a teacher that, you know, is not needed at a grade level. Which grade level, like, is escaping me at this point. It's not kindergarten, don't worry about that. But in any event, it's, you're not gonna see it on there because it's not broken down like class, you know, enrollment. But rather than reducing the position, which, you know, would save some money, we're proposing to reallocate that to a middle school intervention position. Because we're finding our tier-two intervention at middle school level, you know, could, could use some help. And, you know, we, we believe that will, it'll make a huge difference at the middle school. It'll also set kids up for success as they move on to grade nine.
And that too, it's the current second grade when we did that. It's a shrinky bubble compared to what's current.
I can get you an actual answer to that when I like, in my office. I just don't want to misspeak right now because I don't have it in front of me, but, but you're probably right. You know, we're, we're not like proposing that we increase class sizes a ton or anything like that. It was just, there is a class moving up that we, we don't need as many teachers as that are there, but as I said.
So the thought is to keep that faculty person just in a different position because these things fluctuate. You can see like certain grade years, like every, everybody at baby's that year, yeah.
I mean, it might not be the same actual person because it's gonna be licensure dependent and, you know, it's gonna be a different level. Because it's an elementary position we propose reallocating. However, we think it'll have a huge impact at the middle school level.
Yeah.
And I do believe a member of the public spoke about, uh, middle school area at this meeting. So that is one thing we're trying to do to meet that need.
I appreciate that. So they can't be the same person, do we expect that it will?
So it might be, right, a third grade teacher goes to fourth and maybe that person was.
Okay, so we, it would be an in-district.
Yeah, and that's gonna be up to the building and licensure and that's.
Thank you, yeah.
My purview. All right, so in summary, our bottom line, we're proposing not adding anything. Reductions are everything I, you know, pointed out to you. It was the minimal savings, it was the staff attrition, it was not replacing the MBS special ed position. It was moving a bunch of money to school choice to offset the electric bill. That's what's in there. To get you to that figure, so you'll see the total proposed operating budget is that $21,61,734 figure. Uh, which institutes an 11.3% increase over the FY24 approved budget now. Some folks may be looking at that saying, whoa, that's a large increase, me included. I can tell you it's not as high as it was the first time I plugged all of these numbers into a spreadsheet. And it's much higher than people, most districts would, would be used to looking at. However, we feel that the reasons for that are founded. We feel that we're not in a position to be sunsetting positions that were created with the ESSER money because the needs are still there. to be sunsetting positions that were created with the Esser money because the needs are still there. Um, costs of everything go up, and honestly, most of that is fixed costs that we don't have any control of, but we have legal and, in most cases, moral obligations to provide the services.
And speaking to the 11% to 12% that we're talking about, it's not just regular increase. Like, we've seen astronomical rises in two, three years to these costs.
Yeah. I could rant for a while about like, how is the inflation figure that they put in as a chapter 71.1% and then the rest of these are 5%, 5%, 5%.
It's.
They need to get their math going.
Well, it's a big increase, but I, you know, the good news, if any, is that if this budget were to pass at, you know, the proposed amount, um, going into FY '26, you're not going to see as big of an increase because those staff members will have been built into the, you know, you're going to be looking at different situations next year.
And if we, if you would not have been building that in in prior years, you'd probably be 18, 20%.
Or we'd be looking at cuts.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, you, you know, which is something that, you know, we don't want to be doing right now, so. Um, anyway, this is, uh, my overview. I hope it was informative.
Incredibly informative. Thanks, Rob.
Eric, how do you feel?
Was this not surprising?
It was pretty, it was not surprising. I, I mean, I, when I saw the initial number, I was like, whoa. I knew it was going to be high. I didn't think it was going to be that high. Um, but no, given all the variables I mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, it really wasn't. Um, you know.
And we got to remind ourselves and the public once more that this is prior to finalizing contract negotiations.
Yes, yes.
It is.
Um, so one of the things that we hear a lot is about like growth in positions. What, what we'd be looking, just, I mean, you can't, I know you can't give me exact numbers, but like, what are we looking at if we tried to add something? Like, adding AP classes isn't going to cost us anything, but like, what if, you know, eventually we explored like adding world languages or, yeah, yeah.
I would like, I think you have to have a plan in the future. It definitely is not going to fit in the budget now.
Not just.
Yeah.
But I think a plan in the future would make sense, uh, to offer probably Spanish because that, right now, that is, you know, the most popular language around, uh, and start with, uh, you know, eighth grade.
Right.
And then, you know, they put, and eventually if you could do seventh and eighth, they could take, you know, pack one in seventh grade, pack two in eighth grade, then they could give them Spanish one credit.
Right.
And then they would go up to the high school already, take, take Spanish two. And that's just a way of advancing kids, right?
Yeah.
That opportunity for that to happen, or, um, they would, they could just take it in eighth grade and then they could take Spanish one again, you know, just so they have an understanding of it, or they could do Spanish culture.
Right.
In, in the middle school. I think there, I've spoken to several parents and it, you know, world language is taught in most schools, right, in seventh and eighth grade. That, it, that's not something that is not common, that, uh, again, budget-wise, we just, we just can't do it.
Yeah.
You can't just create nothing.
But AP classes would be teachers that are currently there at a higher level.
Yes, what we, uh, we, we still have to meet with the math department about this, but, for example, um, you can take, we have a lot, we have, uh, two or three classes of pre-cal already taught, taught at the high school. And, um, college board is allowing you to call that AP pre-cal. So it's the same class that is pre-cal, the same curriculum, but you get AP credit.
That's great.
So that, that is like something that we should think about, right?
Yeah.
Um, and if.
Capitalize on what we're doing.
Yes, and if you do that.
And you increase your choice in numbers, maybe you're making enough money.
At the drop off, where, Nick, ninth grade doesn't seem that significant, but 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, I mean, we could be looking at drive. That's what's driving, and, and class sizes at the high school, I'm assuming, are much smaller than the elementary school.
It's under the task.
Depending on.
It's under the task.
Yeah.
It's upon the course. Of course, courses that you acquire, you know, four years of English, right?
Yeah.
Those classes.
I mean, I, you know, the, the high school enrollments will recover a bit in the coming years. Like, if you look, you know, the next year's senior and junior.
You track those numbers.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
You keep moving the ones behind them often, and, you know.
Right, right. I mean, it's all temporary.
Or with all this technology advances, are there places for grants to add, not just AP classes, but classes that deal with technology that are maybe unique to the district?
This is the tricky thing.
Yeah.
You can introduce these things as pilot programs, but if you know you don't have any method to fund that yourself, it, the grant is temporary, so you're giving something that you are very likely going to have to take away. So you have to be careful about how you fund these things through grants.
Yeah, I guess that, I guess that's the question. I don't know if this is what your question is, like, what? So we're talking, we, we're talking about adding something like that, like tech or more STEAM, most of the current STEAM teacher could do more of the great, like, any of these things. We're talking about, I think, like a two-year, three-year, 10-year, like, how long, what are we talking about?
I think you don't know what the budget's going to be in the following year, right?
You don't know.
What, what we could look at is like, what is the current curriculum makeup, right? Are there some classes, is there some, like, are there gaps in the school that, like, that's something that you could maybe finesse with current faculty crop? But like, that's not a conversation for this meeting, but that's something we could talk about in the next session, like.
Yeah.
Is there, you know, a special that?
Yeah.
You know, that is, that we could improve upon or beef up or something like that, you know?
I'm just curious, like, from the, the public perspective of like, okay, so we're looking at, what was it, 21 million dollars, like, I could totally see, had I not taken the position with the committee, I'd just be like, well, it's just like a hundred thousand dollars, like, add a person in. How, like, what difference does a hundred thousand dollars make on 21 million? It's fine, but it's not like, it's, yeah, it doesn't work that way. I'm just, just clarifying.
It doesn't work that way. There's also health insurance benefits, costs, there's retirement contributions, there's things that happen on the city side too when we, we hire people.
So creating growth in positions is this, okay, you got to have a long-term, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the elementary level pre-k, are there tons of pilot introductory programs we could try? Sure. Get grant funding, do, you know, but it seems to, what I feel like and what I'm hearing a lot of people say is what feels weak right now is the middle school curriculum.
With the grants.
So that's not why high school is low, lower as far as, I don't feel like the preparation for middle school, whether it's out or is school choosing out? Because is there a way to find out? I know we've talked about why are people leaving, but what are other districts? What majority of the kids are going to what districts and what do they seem to have that we don't have?
High school's a different case. High school specialty, honestly, throw a lot of choice out, right, PBPA or these other kinds of vocational schools.
But most people that choice out do it earlier in their children's careers.
Right.
Um.
We used to lose a lot at fifth grade when we still had Whitebrook. You could see a huge drop off for four to five.
Interesting.
We lose a lot to Smithville.
We'll lose high school students to Smithville.
Yeah, that's what they call. Interesting. Okay.
You know, lose them to C-Tech because they're only there for a half day. They're still our students.
Right, right.
They're still part of our enrollment.
And if we get a school choice, how much does revenue that would then?
For every student we take in, we get $5,000 of revenue, plus a special ed increment of that particular student requires.
Vocational pressure.
Services above and beyond. Um, you know, a special ed increment could be a lot if a student requires a one-on-one educator. Pretty much, you know, almost their whole salary would probably be part of that spent increment. Um, you know, and I, I, I never know that until the end of the year. I, I won't know what this year's revenue is going to be until, you know, because people do come and go.
Right.
Um, so like, next year's projection is based on what we have right now, but that actual figure will differ.
Choice is affected by the housing market around us right now too. People trying, like, they, uh, they rent in one place, can't afford to buy in that place for the rental. But like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of complex stuff going on.
It's true, but maybe a hopeful piece would be, I don't know where the city is with the, um, Epping project, but that would be a lot of housing. It's not coming soon, but.
Nope.
So, as we look ahead, yeah.
So being so new and naive right now, I would like to ask, when we look at budgets like this and realize that we're, we're looking for more income and revenue, where do we typically start that conversation as far as what we can look to for? Obviously, school choice, but where's another avenue? And maybe your answer is there isn't. I just don't know.
Yeah, how do we get a lot of?
I mean, school revenue, it's either school choice, it could be grants, it could be well, circuit breaker revenue. Um, but, I mean, yeah, it's revenue, but it's also reimbursement. Like, when you get circuit breaker revenue, you're being reimbursed for money you already spent.
Right.
Um, so it's revenue in the sense that I use it the following year.
Right.
Um, you know, some of this too will depend on if we get any extraordinary relief funding for this year.
That's right.
Because we, you know.
When are we going to hear about that?
You won't know till April and then. I, I, I mean, the claim form will be submitted by early March because it has to be, but we're not going to hear until.
Right.
Uh, I, I mean, once the claim form's submitted, I'll have an idea that I'm not going to make public.
Yeah.
Uh, because if it's, you know.
Yeah.
Completely wrong, I don't want anybody pointing fingers at me, but, um, I'll at least know if we qualify for something.
Yeah.
Um, whether the state funds the entire amount is, that's the piece you won't know until April or May. However, if we get some of that, my deficit at the end of this year is not as high, which means we're in a better situation next year. Is it possible this number can go down? Possibly, yeah. I mean, there's, maybe I can, uh, pay for more out-of-district tuition with circuit breaker.
Right.
And the whole, I mean, essentially what we're going to be doing is asking the city to help us catch up from this huge inflationary surge that we saw. So if we can get more on track with that, then maybe next year, if the mayor's budget recommendation is 4% next year, maybe our projected costs don't quite meet what the, you know what I mean? That's the hope in the future, but we need the city's assistance now to catch us up.
A big portion I'm assuming is from the state. Are the, the town's taxes?
That is the, that's the part.
Our pretty tax.
80%.
Yeah. Do we anticipate that being more revenue than previous years based on new?
So you can't collect, there's a law in Massachusetts, you can't collect more than 2.5% year to year from your prior year. So it can't increase more than that, but the expectation is it will, particularly given the housing market. We haven't had trouble collecting revenue, but there's additional revenue and, and it's the pot money, like, there's other revenue streams.
Fees, there's unrestricted government aid, which is, you know, sort of like chapter 70 funding for the city, uh, if you will, um.
There's no way to get, there's just no way to get money. The only way you could get it is if a city decides to give more than the minimum contribution.
We can't, we can't. We're not bait sailing our way.
Yeah, no, I know that. I realize that.
Yeah, so there, it's a, it's a tight budget. There is absolutely no extra here to start innovative programs or, you know, to, to add personnel, which is, you're going to start.
Right.
Programs, it's going to be personnel that are going to do it. There's just no, there's no funding. I mean, I'm thankful that there's no big deficit.
Yeah.
Right? Like, there are some cities right now, towns that are facing, right near here, that are facing a million dollars.
Cuts, yeah.
Lots of sin and cuts, and they're not going to be able to keep their services for next year. So, you know, at least we're, we can be very thankful that we're not seeing huge. And we, we, we know there'll be some deficit at the end of the year, but, you know, we're not going to see something a million dollars.
And we did, not that long ago, my prior tenure on here, we were firing people and we were making cuts year after year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I, um, what I appreciate about getting right to the 11.3 and having level services is that this is the value of this school committee and the parents, what they have told us over the past five years, that, you know, I've been kind of part of this. Like, this is, this is the priority and the value of our district.
Hmm, the cities are going to spend it on this, but you're going to spend it on.
So it's up, you know, our job, I feel like our job is, you, you provided everything that could possibly, we needed to explain what's going on here. So we just make our case and advocate for the, against the voters.
Like, well, Nick and I, you know, we're talking is that we just looked, we took out electricity we can't control, right? And we took out special ed placements, which we really can't control. We do try to bring as many kids as, in, back as we can. Um, just, just even those two. We can't control those. It shows that it's a tight budget and that we're not, we're spending, we don't have pockets of money.
Yeah.
Anywhere. Everything's being used for, for the students here.
Yeah.
And we can't control those. And the health insurance was the other one. We can't control that either. So it looks a lot at 11% plus, but if you take away those things we can't control, this is a very tightly managed budget here.
Which is, but the city's always said it expects, right? It expects its departments to run tightly in budgets. Well, the effect of that, one of the effects of that is that when you have outside forces, like, an inflationary surge, that department is going to, exactly right.
Just to name a couple of.
That department is.
Major events in the past.
An adjustment.
Yeah.
I also think too, to give parents some hope, like, when we get through this muck and mire and get into the spring, once we're through budgets and through these big trucks we have in front of us, I really do want to explore, you know, can we get perhaps some of our high school students to start a Spanish club? Can we do something? It's not going to be the ideal endgame fix, but can we start to make?
Start the process.
Free introductions for some exposure, build intergenerational bonds.
Can we find like the AP?
Right. And continue to get creative.
Yeah.
Activities.
Right, right. You have NHS kids that have to get credits for things, like, there are things we could maybe explore.
Do you remember off the top of your head what that percent increase actually was last year?
Coming from last year to this year's budget?
Yeah.
5.28%.
5.28, and the year before that it was.
Wow.
That was a weird year where a chunk got left out.
What we actually got was.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't remember.
But you spent down a huge amount of reserve funds, right? You spent down a whole.
I spent on a lot of school choice funds when I got hired to close the fiscal year '22. Um, last year, I did not kill the school choice funds. Um, the city was, was gracious enough to give us an additional appropriation, um, in the amount of $200,000 and that.
Right, after the budget approval?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was not April. I went to the city council, I put in a request for an appropriation.
We knew it was coming. We agreed on it. And to be clear, we can't, appropriations is not an appropriate way.
Method to do that.
For a school budget, it's, you know, you, you really want to keep those to absolute emergency situations, like, you got a boiler that's dead and you got a $150,000 bill or something.
Yeah.
Um, but.
You can't, you can't be going to public meetings begging for money for a new special ed placement or something.
So HIPAA.
Right.
PHI, whatever the word is, and so many.
Yeah, we, uh, we did get an appropriation last year, which we were very thankful for. It got us through last year. You know, we, we spent school choice and circuit breaker and grant funding as budgeted and we ended up, uh, pretty okay at the end of last year.
Yeah, okay. So this increase has been coming for a while, but because we still had Esser, it offset it, but here, Esser's odd. So here, here it is.
Yeah.
Combination with inflation.
In combination.
Combination.
It could have been so much worse, really. I'm great about it, but I, it could have been so much worse.
I'm glad we have a, a real chance to advocate for the department and not fight anybody, maintain the programs we offer this year.
I think that's the, that's the thing, like, we just have to, because this is a lot to ask for, right? 11.3.
And we're going to have to come up with more.
Probably the biggest budget I'm ever going to have.
Yeah, but we just have to keep in mind what our values are, our values and those values of the district. And, you know, who knows what will be involved in the ask. Um, but I have been in, um, contact with the city council, um, finance committee, and I know unfortunately, uh, Tom Peake is not feeling well, so he's not able to watch tonight, but he's going to watch the recording. And just as much as possible, having this open communication, which has so much great communication out to city that I doubt they'll be, that's a fact too.
I'm willing to hear the argument against this. I don't understand how it could possibly be more compelling than this argument. I'm willing to hear that out, but let's hope the better argument comes today.
Yeah. I think the groundwork has been laid. Thank you for the service of inroads that you have made over the past couple of years.
All right, I'm, I'm done. I don't have any.
Anything else in the agenda?
Just.
Let me look. Okay, uh. I think other business is our only other thing here, and we are at 6:28, so I won't spend too long on this. I just wanted to, oh, the other, the thing I had from the last time we met, we actually have a bit, solar report business. Is that something that we could do, like, after the budget season is over, like, figure out what we do produce of the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
I don't know if you can optimize it or just report out, like, here's what we're.
I, I mean, you, you can track what's being pumped back into the building. There's like a, like, software we have that can show what goes back into the high school.
That'd be interesting just for folks to see what we're.
I, I don't know that there's a way to make it better other than adding more.
No, I don't think you can do that, no. But just so people are aware of what the effort that we are, and like, the stuff that we're doing.
But when you're talking about possible avenues for grants, one-time costs like that are the best way to.
Yeah.
Spend grant money.
Not, not while the budget trust is ongoing, but after that.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, think about getting that, just like a visual report, whatever, of what we produce.
Maybe that's not to Nick. Maybe we investigate and find some silver.
That's a great question.
Well, I, I, you know, several vendors over the course of time have, have reached out with, you know, proposals and whatnot, but, uh, I've been told by people in the business to, uh, watch it.
I can tell you which companies not to call back.
Well, just a lot of times there's stuff in their contracts that, like, over time, they're getting way more of that, like, it, it, and, you know, unless you have an actual lawyer in your procurement department.
Yeah.
I wouldn't touch one of those things right now.
Quebene, right?
Yeah, I am not a lawyer. I can do public purchasing, but, you, you know, like, that would be.
But if they say, it'd be great if you had ten more panels and we could secure grant funding to put ten more, I know Berman talked about that.
They also have to get the commissioner of education's, uh, approval to put things on your movement.
Okay.
Call that, sir.
We do, um, because we did it in North Hampton and Three Allen. Have them, but the commissioner of Ed has said it's a little. Yeah, but.
Park lot.
What was I gonna say? The park lot said that.
But because it's school property, the commissioner has to approve.
No, prove it. We'll just write a nice little letter, this other.
Well, we'll deal with that when you're, do you want me to adjourn?
No, I have another thing. Okay, is anyone else have any other, any other, other? Okay, so the meeting on three, five, March fifth, which is which day?
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday. That, um, day has a lot of meetings in the building. Is it possible that we can do five P M? If we can move to five P M, we have this room. Is that the day that's like your wife's birthday?
No, that's next time. That's the twenty-sixth.
Okay, again, that's regardless. We should bring it.
So you're saying?
Yeah, so three, five, four thirty is not available in this room. If we wanna have a hybrid, we'd have to do it at five o'clock.
That's okay, that's okay for you, Nick.
I might do it remotely, but.
Oh, yeah, you should do that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So that's gonna be at five?
I'm gonna get work.
Yeah, just to call.
Well, the other thing I can do is I can look for another time.
No, it's fine.
Like, we could talk about going four o'clock and doing it at five?
I mean, I can.
Eric, he couldn't get here at four, could you? Because of your job, I don't know. Uh, I mean, I, I could try. I mean, I just, I don't wanna put pressure on you to do that though. Rather than that or whatever, like, it's not huge.
Well, I wonder if I can loop back and find four thirty in a different room? And I don't see why we can't, oh, because maybe they want the owl. Like, why can't we just have the owl with us?
We're supposed to have the second owl upstairs.
Do we have two owls?
I've never seen an owl.
There's two owls, we're supposed to have an owl and a laptop upstairs.
Okay, so I'm gonna circle back. Let's not make any official change yet.
Okay.
Um, and I'm gonna explore where we can have a four thirty meeting. Can you, are you, well, can you be here in person for a four thirty meeting?
Yeah, I already have schedule.
Right, so, okay. Okay, so hold on that.
Got it.
And then I will take a motion to adjourn. There's no other.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
She said second.
Second motion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, and we are adjourned.